Nine, twenty twenty one is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tabs. This meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV Services website and on Channel twenty eight and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. Good evening and welcome tonight to Directors and Superintendent. Welcome to tonight's special meeting to approve substitute incentives, retention bonuses for paraeducators, and referral bonuses for high need positions. Superintendent, Superintendent Guedo, would you like to introduce this next item?
Yes, thank you Chair de Pass and good evening Directors. Earlier today, actually, I was in my monthly superintendents meeting for leaders here in the state of Oregon and one of the common themes that I heard from my colleagues is how much severe staffing shortages are affecting their ability to maintain stable school experiences for our students and I know that that's a theme that's not just local and in the region but across affecting districts across the country so we're going to continue to try to be creative and innovative about ways to incentivize staff in PPS. Especially in critical need areas, so tonight you're going to hear from our Chief of HR and share with you an overview of a resolution of some ways we think we can we can try to help the situation, so Sharon.
Thank you Superintendent, good evening Directors, Sharon Reese, Chief of Human Resources. As the superintendent identified Portland Public Schools, like many other schools, districts and employers across the country are experiencing significant staffing shortages in critical positions as a result of the pandemic labor market shortages. And those are having a system-wide impact on our schools. We don't have a choice in a school district to scale back on what we offer to students, so what's happening is we're creating additional burden and strain on staff to lean in to offer the same sort of service in the absence of being fully staffed. As an example, PPS right now has about forty percent fewer substitutes, substitute educators now than we had before the pandemic. We're experiencing significant vacancies for custodial staff, paraeducators, school-based counselors, social workers, psychologists, qualified mental health providers, and special education classroom educators. And so to address the staffing shortage, what we're bringing and to increase the number of qualified job applicants for these high need positions, we're bringing to you three incentives this evening. A substitute incentive program, a referral incentive bonus to current employees who refer successful candidates into our high needs positions, and a retention bonus for new and current paraeducators. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about these programs.
I'd like to open the floor for questions. Seeing as there are none, do I have a motion in a second to adopt Resolution six four zero four, Resolution approving substitute incentives, referral bonuses for high need positions, and retention bonuses for paraeducators?
So moved.
Second.
I didn't get that second, was that Director Hollins?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there any board discussion?
Chair de Pass, I would just say I appreciate staff bringing these forward. I think we can we can see the labor impacts affecting industries throughout the country, but particularly schools and I just appreciate the flexibility. I think this is what actually top employers are doing in both the private and the public sector is figuring out ways to incentivize and bring people in to the workforce, you know, as needed. So I appreciate the flexibility and I think these make a lot of sense and hit a nice balance between offering some incentives but still being fiscally responsible in how we do it. So thanks to staff for that.
I just want to echo that I appreciate the district's response and ability to adapt in real time to a situation that we haven't faced before that I know of and I have high hopes for this. Is there any further discussion before we take a take a Ms Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
The board will now vote on Resolution six four zero four, Resolution approving substitute incentives, referral bonuses for high need positions, and retention bonuses for paraeducators. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? And I don't see Director Green in the room yet. Student Representative Weinberg, what is your official vote?
Yes.
Chair de Pass, did Director Konstant get a vote? And I didn't see her come off me and I may have missed it.
Director Konstant? I'm wondering if she's having connectivity issues.
And just a point of order, I forget, does the student rep vote on compensation for employees?
That's what I was wondering as well.
Um, that is a great question for Liz.
No, but it's an it's a non-counting vote anyways, but I think generally the the student representative does not.
Okay, so it's an unofficial vote and I don't know if I if I specified that, but we do appreciate your weighing in, Student Representative Weinberg. It sounds like we have a vote passing of six to zero with zero abstentions with Director Green absent.
I'm not sure you got a vote from Director Konstant. Unless you think unless you heard it, I did not.
I did not hear it. I did not hear it. Director Konstant?
Sorry, this is Director Lowry. I texted Director Konstant and she said no, she didn't vote because she's not actually at the meeting right this second. So she said, no, I'm absent when I asked if she voted.
It appears as if she's present because I see her. I see her name on the screen, so regardless.
It's COVID present.
It still passes.
It still passes with five to zero with zero abstentions with Student Representative Weinberg voting unofficially yes. And that conclude that concludes this portion of our meeting. The next regular meeting of the board will be held on November sixteenth at six o'clock. This meeting is now adjourned.
Excuse me one second. Excuse me one second. Sorry Chair de Pass, this is Amy and I was logged in and then I got called away. And so I didn't vote, so you can record my vote as a yes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. We saw that you were here, then we heard that you weren't here, so it's COVID and everything's a little different, so I appreciate you weighing in. Thank you Director Konstant. So the next regular meeting of the board will be held on November sixteenth at six PM and that meeting will be virtual. This meeting is now adjourned and we'll next move into a into a work session on the long-range facilities plan. And if I had a gavel, I would bang it right now. Thank you. This work session of the Board of Education for November nine, twenty twenty one is called to order. Tonight, we are meeting in a work session to learn more detail about the district's long-range facility plan. Superintendent, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, thank you Chair and good evening again Directors and to all the staff that have joined us for tonight's work session. Staff has been working diligently, collaborating on developing a long-range facility plan. It's an exercise that that school systems have to go through periodically, partly because it's important that we project outwards into the future around the kind of physical facility portfolio we need to meet students' programming needs, the kind of vision we have for the school district, and we know facilities. We want them to support the kind of exciting teaching and learning and well-rounded experiences that we think are important when they attend PPS. And so we have a star-studded cast of staff who can speak to all the different facets of the kind of programming that we want students to experience. But kicking us off this evening is our Chief Operations Officer again, Dan Young. So I'm going to pass it over to him to to walk us through where we are in our long-range facilities plan.
Thank you Superintendent and good evening Chair de Pass, Directors and Superintendent Weinberg. Thank you for the opportunity to discuss the long-range facilities plan again tonight. At our last meeting two weeks ago, our discussion focused on the long-range facilities plan development process and community and stakeholder engagement. Tonight, we're going to touch on a few other highlight areas, including enrollment and program vision. So just a couple of quick refreshers and then I will step out of the way. The long-range facilities plan is a living document because our programs, enrollment and facility conditions change over time, so we'll list documents. And please know, our goal is not for each board director to have an extensive knowledge of every section of the plan. Rather, we simply hope directors feel familiar and comfortable with the structure and understand the general content of the plan, so it is a useful reference tool going forward. And lastly, the document is informational. The plan itself does not make any specific commitments, rather provides a framework to be refined and tested prior to future capital decisions. So with that, I will turn it over to our design and planning Senior Program Manager, John Lyons.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to be with you again. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen and we'll jump right in, so. So it is a pleasure to be with you again, talking about the long-range facility plan. So today we'll talk about some key statements within the document as well as hear from our educational program leaders about their respective program visions. So just a few reminders about our discussion from about two weeks ago. We plan to maintain this document with current data in anticipation of future capital measures. And then one other point I'd like to highlight from our October conversation is that this document is a regulatory requirement. We're required to complete it over ten years. The state asked us to synthesize information from three areas: facility condition, enrollment forecast, and educational vision. That said, my personal hope for this document is that we go beyond our regulatory requirement and generate a shared vocabulary describing the vast needs of the capital forecasts for the district. So today we'll review key statements from those three areas: enrollment and utilization, facility condition, and educational program vision. To help illustrate our educational program vision, members from the educational leadership team have joined us this evening to answer questions as well as tell us about their respective program visions. And then finally, the last section will review a very high-level summary of the district's capital needs for consideration in future bonds. So this is a reminder of the overall document structure. Enrollment and utilization and facility condition both contain system-level discussions of these topics. We'll discuss program vision in some detail this this evening. And we reviewed the planning principles section last week. The last section, capital forecast, is a deep study of our buildings, including detailed information on the physical condition, educational suitability, and future enrollment in of each school. In this section, we begin to draw some of the inferences of the previous sections, but I want to emphasize something that Dan said is that there's much work to be done in anticipation of a future bond. So just want to orient everyone to the district's real estate portfolio. So we operate about nine million square feet of building area. And depending on who you ask, we are either the first or the second largest property owner in the city of Portland. And then the only other item I want to highlight on this slide is that we currently have about forty-five elementary schools. We expect that number to grow as we continue to convert our K eights to either elementary or middle schools. So the purpose of this document is really to serve as a foundation for capital planning. So this chart presents the most recent bond broken down by spending category. Modernizations constitute the largest category, followed by facility improvements, educational improvements, and administration and contingency. The document offers information on all major categories but does not outline specific project scopes or timelines. Further study is necessary to determine project feasibility within future project parameters. So I'm going to go over some of the the key takeaways from our enrollment forecast and utilization. One thing I failed to mention at the beginning here is if you have questions, please do interrupt me. Happy to stop and address the question then or follow up if I don't know the answer. So looking at our overall enrollment forecast, after ten consecutive years of growth from two thousand and eight until two thousand and eighteen, the district saw a slight loss of students between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen. In fall twenty twenty, we enrolled just under forty-seven thousand students, a drop of about seventeen hundred students from fall twenty nineteen. The enrollment decline in fall twenty twenty was of course attributable to families' choices around distance learning and of course pandemic. Irrespective of COVID, the district's overall enrollment is expected to decline three point seven percent over the next fifteen years. This is primarily due to declining birth rates, a trend that we share with other urban districts. Birth rates have fallen precipitously since twenty ten. The number of births fell by twenty-six percent from two thousand and eight to its in its peak at two thousand and eight to twenty nineteen. The enrollment decline will not affect all configurations in the same way, so you can see this chart, we are at the cusp of an enrollment bubble in our high schools. While other configurations are set to decline with a slight rise near the end of the forecast period.
John, just did you say you wanted questions as as we go?
Please do, yeah.
If we could go go back just one slide, because you know, you talked about the three point seven percent decline and the reasons. First of all, I wanted to say that that first number twenty-one, twenty-two is actually an actual number, right? The 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 jump back, I think we've seen that in terms of getting back to sort of the pre-pandemic peak.
It's not, sorry. That's still forecasted. The the actual numbers, I believe, are going to be released this week, but I have not seen the the actual enrollments for the current year.
Okay, great, thank you. But I see this three point seven percent decline followed by an uptick again. Is that is that an assumption of in-migration into the area or what's that? What's that based off of?
Yeah, so a couple of things. There's been a number of housing initiatives by the city of Portland that will will boost affordable housing and housing for families. So you're seeing more incentives for two and three-bedroom apartments throughout the city. Also migrant and refugee populations. But again, the declining birth rates, I think, are the overall trend that you're seeing is it's really negating much of the other influx and variations and population shifts that we're we're seeing. And just to clarify one more point, the three point seven decline is the entirety of the range, so that's from the forecast period, so starting twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, all the way out to twenty thirty-five, thirty-six.
Oh, great. That that is really, that's a helpful clarification. I and I guess I don't dwell on it too much. This is my first time sort of through these looking long range, but but it does feel like when a long-range facility plan, we're not, we're not planning for that lowest dip. We're actually planning for where this line continues. And and I think that's where it gets really challenging, right? We're going to see this decline where we've got too much capacity, but then we don't want to make the mistake of of consolidating to then find ten years later, we have to to add again. So I just I note that the the up and down nature makes this particularly challenging to 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 plan for.
It's a really, really great point because with our buildings, we need to make really great hundred-year decisions, which we don't always have the data for. And if you kind of squint, we're looking at about twenty-six years here and you can begin to see the sine wave. So it's just, it's very challenging. I think the interest in the regulatory requirement in having a study these is just ensuring that we have enough physical capacity to support students in the near future, which the data we're seeing, the answer is yes.
Yeah, and I just wanted to comment that I'm really happy to see finally the the housing data reflected in our in our forecast because, as you mentioned, there are plans for, I think, six to eight hundred units in the Jefferson Roosevelt cluster that are family-sized, which is a very different way of approaching housing. So subsidized condominiums and rental housing, ownership opportunities in this area is tells us a story about, you know, exactly building to the higher capacity. And because of those dips, it also tells me that we should plan for flexibility in in our buildings, that we have to, it's like demand-side energy, you have to plan for a peak and manage for the valleys.
That's really well said. Yeah, that's great. Any other questions before I move on? So then, looking at the the geography of our enrollment change, exactly as Chair de Pass mentioned, so we're looking at affordable housing growth, two and three bedrooms in areas of North Portland and the Jefferson cluster. Most other clusters are forecast to decline. We're looking at losses of about two hundred students over a fifteen-year period for Cleveland, Franklin, Jefferson, Grant, Lincoln, while McDaniel and Roosevelt are forecast to lose about four hundred students. And again, this largely reflects district-wide trends influenced by declining birth rates. So if there are no other questions about enrollment forecast, I can move over to facility condition, go through that really quickly. So this is a chart representing our building age. Most of our buildings were constructed in one of three building booms, one in the twenties, which you can see at the top here, one in the fifties, and then the current modernization effort represented by these low bars down here. Nearly one half of the district buildings were constructed before World War Two. Many of these structures operate systems from their original construction date. The risk of system failure in these buildings is very, very high to say nothing of the maintenance and energy costs associated with operating older building systems. Then older buildings, aside from having onerous maintenance and upkeep costs often carry antecedent cultural norms. So here I'm thinking specifically about designs around restrooms and accessibility, and of course, there are many, many others. So the measure we use to talk about facility condition for our buildings is the Facility Condition Index, the FCI. It is a standardized scale used for capital planning. And FCI allows us to compare the condition of similar buildings to one another as well as track changes over time. So FCI values range from zero, which is great, which would be one of our new buildings, to one, which is critical. A higher FCI indicates a greater need for remedial funding relative to the facility's replacement value. And it's probably no surprise that the district's average is zero point one six or colloquial poor. So this is a distribution of FCI scores across the district. FCIs for individual schools are in the abridged facility condition or excuse me, long-range facility plan that you have, and there'll be more detailed information on each building provided in the next version of the document that you'll receive pretty soon here. So with that, if there are no questions about facility condition.
John, I have a general question. If I'd known we could answer questions at the beginning, I probably would have part of the frame up. But you laid out the areas that were statutorily should should cover. But I'm wondering if there's any prohibition on us overlaying other issues and, you know, one that comes to mind is sustainability and sort of climate response. And looking through the deck, I didn't I saw a reference to it in the planning tools, but I was looking for like then how does it manifest itself in the in the work? And I didn't see that, but I'm just curious, can we overlay as long as we don't ignore or not utilize the areas that they've specified, can we also integrate our own priorities that would be part of our long-range facilities plan?
The answer is yes. I would I would love to to help put together that study. So yes, absolutely. We could we could totally take that on.
I have a question kind of building on that. So we have to follow the building code, no matter what we build. And the building code is has pretty stringent energy requirements and in climate response requirements, just in the building code. Does and we maybe don't have to answer this now, but does does our plan include greater than any, are there any places where we we offer greater than what the building code is a floor? Is are there are there, is there a greater than a vision for meeting and exceeding the electrical code, for instance, or the energy code?
Yeah, so great question. The answer is yes. So we we don't talk about kind of dimensional requirements of our buildings within this document. That information lives in a handful of other documents that that live within Dan's group. So so we have energy and sustainability standards. Of course, we have the Edspec, which outlines a vast number of ways that we exceed building code. Our design standards do the same thing and they'll they'll get into building systems, structural requirements, all sorts of ways. But absolutely, we exceed building code in many, many arenas.
And John and Directors, it a nod towards our commitment to climate justice is also found in the planning principles of the long-range plan, page eighty, I believe, where that's referred to. And of course, then that appears, you know, as a footnote and we could be more explicit about, you know, how that's how that's a real planning principle to how we think about our buildings.
And this is Director Lowry, and I think, you know, those of us who've been to Kellogg and some of our other newer buildings have seen that commitment to climate justice in the design of the building. And, you know, Kellogg, there's all these wonderful little medallions on the walls that help you understand how those climate justice design principles were included in the building. So it's not just something we're planning for, it's something we're already living out now.
And Kellogg, I think, is the lead gold building, right? And and all of our rebuilt high schools are some measure of lead designation.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I guess I, one of the reasons I raised it is just tomorrow in the Policy Committee, we're going to be having a conversation, discussion, and hopefully moving soon for a public comment on the climate response policy. And if we're shooting for a target of twenty forty, it seems like the integration of at least the net, what like what we think needs to happen in the next ten years to hit twenty forty. It seems like we need to include at least in the building category be thinking about that in this document, not it's like some other activity. So that's that. That's a sort of question for me about how that how that would come to life in the in the plan.
So our document landscape is is can be intimidating, but it is a well-coordinated set of documents, so kind of led by a group, group of people that talk to each other pretty frequently, so we can we can definitely reflect that in this document as well as articulate where to find what information. Be happy to do that. Other questions about enrollment or facility condition?
This is maybe an obvious question if you've worked on been working on the report, but maybe not to the broader public. So in twenty sixteen, we had all of the issues come to light with health and safety in the buildings, which was in our in our bond. There's seismic that's called out here, and I guess the question I As I, there's seismic that's called out here. Um, and I guess the question I have for the next ten years is like, did that a hundred and fifty million that we spent address all the radon, lead in the water, lead in the paint, um asbestos issues, so that's there, because I I think, I I don't think I saw them, but I'm just wondering if that's captured somewhere else in this document? Or did that investment really take care of the most sort of immediate thing? So now we're at a, so an acceptable baseline for the next ten years?
Yeah, so this study did not include hazardous materials. Um, so so our building condition uh, information is largely about addressing deficiencies in building systems.
And just to note, we we do have other various documents, again, with the the kind of the kaleidoscope of various facility documentation that we have that uh, assess and house information around asbestos, around lead paint. Uh, we do regular uh, water lead inspections as well. So there is kind of a whole other uh, list of documents that we can reference through the longer facilities plan.
Great. So if there are no other questions, I'm going to move on to program vision. And what I'll do here is I'll run through um, our configurations. So elementary, middle and high schools, I'll skip over kids. Uh, and then I will ask um, our respective program leaders to talk about CTE athletics and then the visual and performing arts. We do have representatives from our configurations here in the in the the virtual space with us, so if there are questions, uh, then then we can talk through those together. Shrimping into elementary schools. So we have by far the most number of elementary schools. Um, they are, they range in age from the antique Richmond nineteen oh eight to the relatively recent Rosa Parks, two thousand and six. The average elementary school age is actually older than the district average. And and as you might expect, the condition is also worse than the district average. So, looking at program vision, elementary schools need spaces to facilitate project based activities in order to support differentiated learning. Project based learning should be offered at all grade levels, continue, creating a pedagogical continuum that extends from elementary school through high school. So in terms of our facilities, we need small group areas, um, as well as space for furnishings to facilitate collaboration, sharing of cultural experiences, et cetera. Elementary school buildings and sites should also encourage exploration movement as well as give students the opportunity to use their hands and to build things. Looking at our our facility constraints, elementary schools um, need to be intentionally designed for skill development, um, specifically in the arts, music, physical education, et cetera. And then while title one schools qualify for money for community partners, we often struggle to find space to house um, our our friends in the community. Uh, and competition for space makes it difficult to schedule community events, particularly for large events um in in gyms, cafeterias, libraries, et cetera. So looking at our middle schools, it's a really exciting time.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Before you leave the elementary schools, I noticed in um the middle schools, there's something about, and I'm looking at the actual report, not the presentation, but in in the re- in the report, the middle schools has a high priority of conduct accessibility upgrades to ensure all middle schools are accessible to students, teachers and visitors with physical disabilities. Uh, but then when I look at the um, elementary school section, I don't see that. And I'm wondering why, why not? Since I know that um, we made a really significant, at least initial investment and are trying to get in compliance with ADA. I was, I was delighted to see it in the middle schools, but I'm just wondering why it's not in the elementary school, either the report or, but am I missing it?
Well, so um, I could speculate. Uh, accessibility was raised, I think, specifically in in middle schools, because students are rotating throughout the building during the day. Whereas for elementary school students, they're typically in a homeroom. So um, when we do have an instance where a student struggles with stairs in a building without an elevator, that classroom typically gets shifted to the, to the ground floor of the main level.
And in theory, if we use our bond, this last bond funds, um, not in theory, but we committed to make all ground floors accessible. So if you were an elementary student, you'd at the end of the four years, you would have access to all of the the main floor of the building, but in the middle school, that would be different. Because I think whatever, what I heard and what I'm guessing is the difference.
It wouldn't be different. I think the difference is we're talking about multi-level access at middle schools. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And then just for clarity, that's multi-level access in middle schools, but that would be restroom improvements and um, access improvements for the first floor in elementary buildings?
Correct, you got it, yep. Other questions? Right, so it is an exciting time to be thinking about middle schools. Um, we're currently uh, in the midst of of medical, middle school redesign. Uh, so um, it was, I'm thrilled to to connect with Misha and and coordinate these two efforts. The current middle school initiative, middle school redesign initiative um, is associated with the board strategic vision around prioritizing project based learning. The process will center the voices of BIPOC students as well as special education students and then rethinking the middle school experience. What we're seeing in terms of facility constraints currently is that most middle schools do not have specialized STEM spaces. This is also true for some of our special education uh, classrooms, many of which have been repurposed from old home, home economics classrooms or other spaces. Uh, some middle schools only have one gym or even a shared cafeteria gym, making it difficult or impossible to meet the minimum physical education activity. Any questions about middle schools before I move on to high schools?
I I've got a couple.
Yeah.
Um, so then I'm thinking of some specific middle schools, like the next ten years of ones that we've indicated we're going to prioritize. So I was just curious why they're not in the, like, at least high priority. Um, we know that Harriet Tubman needs to move. Um we know that Har- Harrison Park needs a major investment. And then there were other schools that over the last four to five years, we've identified, like Beaumont couldn't take the Vernon sixth to eighth graders because they needed to build out of a couple of classrooms. And so I'm, I'm curious about um that there's not a call out for uh, those specific schools um, in terms of helping make this transition and making sure that we have the sort of at least the the built platform for a successful and equitable middle grades experience.
Yeah, so just in terms of of Harriet Tubman and Harrison Park. Um, this document is really intended to set sightlines three or four years in the future. So uh, improvements to Harrison Park will or should be completed by then, and Harriet Tubman should be moved. Uh, so we were, we were largely silent on um, most of the, most of the projects within the twenty twenty bond. So there are kind of more acute, immediate concerns. Um, we we didn't so much address within this document. Uh, I'm not um, I'm not immediately familiar with the the concerns around Beaumont though, so I'd be happy to follow up on that.
Yeah, I mean, um, just second, from a layman's pers- the layperson's perspective, um, when I think of like, this is the plan for the next ten years, I'm thinking now till ten years. So if it's something else, it would be great to be able to put that in there. So people aren't looking for something that like, isn't in here. It's like, hey, you left out, just like I just did.
Yeah, um, makes sense.
So that people are aware, like, yeah, that's, that's already booked. Or even if there's a sort of, you know, summary at the beginning or some complimentary document that is like, this is what, this is why the twenty twenty bond items aren't in there. Is it, that that is what struck me when I saw the middle schools, like, oh, these things that are like front and center, that are are big facility, middle school projects um, aren't in here.
That makes sense, and I'm I'm happy to clarify. Um, the
And John, can I just clarify a quick point about the Tubman? Tubman is certainly an effort that is being focused on right now uh, and an effort that we're looking in, identifying uh, what's the right location, uh, what the right path forward is, and including timeline. So it's something that is very approximate and that we're working on right now. And so I I think it does make sense to make a nod to it in this plan. But as far as exactly what and when and where, uh, those things are still variables that are in play.
Yeah, and just to that point, Dan is like, you know, having conversations every day with legislators, and if we put out a document that doesn't the, and we're telling them, like, this is a priority for for the district to have a safer environment for those students. It was not at least mentioned somehow, like, it's being taken, it's being addressed because this is, has a different sightlines that we should state that to your point.
We will absolutely do that. Um, we we have a dedicated entry um, in in the site summary section of the document, uh, where we can reference that. So, yep, we'll do that for sure. Um, just to note, I think um, George Shapiro, you read a really good point. The, the intended um, sequence uh, by the state is that this document would immediately proceed a bond. So in an ideal sequence, which very few schools are able to do, we would have had this document done about fourteen months ago. And and it would be a very different document if that were the case. So um, appreciate, appreciate your comments.
But we're ahead of time for for the next bond.
Exactly, exactly.
We need to look at it optimistically, uh, and hopefully, Director.
One hundred percent. I think, I mean, I I'm actually thinking, like, I see the utility in the document itself for that reason, that that is actually in hand at the time that planning starts.
Yep. So I'm just going to talk about high schools really quick, um, and then then turn it over to our educational leadership. Uh, so beginning with the twenty twelve bond, the district prioritized high schools to be rebuilt or modernized. Uh, the twenty twenty bond includes funds for a new Jefferson and design work for Cleveland and Wells Burnett. And I just want us to all acknowledge this last point. Once we complete the modernization of our of our high schools, we will have rebuilt one third of the district. Like, that is amazing. I just, so I just want us to all acknowledge that. Looking at our high school program vision, every high school should be a high demand with exceptional facilities and consistent educational offerings. So I think latent in this vision is an acknowledgement that most high school sites are vastly undersized to support the goals of our educators. So what we heard was that there are um, some high schools um were modernized prior to current CTE program vision. Consequently, there is misalignment between local interest and offerings. Um, so for example, culinary arts. And that district high school CTE programming is not capturing what is most important to BIPOC students, particularly young BIPOC men. Um, also importantly, we'll hear more about this in a bit, is that most high school sites are undersized with insufficient space for athletic fields. So there are no questions about high schools. I'm going to turn it over to our senior director of college and career readiness to talk about CTE.
John, if you don't mind on that last point, on that last slide, I have a question that's probably for Dan Young. When we talk about facility constraints of our high schools, um you know, we didn't have a long range facilities plan as thorough as this when we developed our original ed specs. And as we have moved on with our bond work, we have tweaked our ed specs and we have learned from experience and learned from mistakes, but we've basically um, kept the core requirements. And Dan, I'm just interested if um you see some ways in which some of the new data, the new synthesis, the new insights that we see in this long range planning document um, may affect our ed specs, because the reason it's apropos to this slide is because we do bump into situations where we're not able to meet the ed specs, um, given our sites. And yet we don't, we generally or historically haven't had creative conversations around, okay, how, where are we going to, how are we going to be able to meet that? Like, for example, if we can't meet the athletic ed specs at Jefferson, do we plan for those uses and an adjacent site? Or, you know, I'm just interested in your musings there, Dan.
Uh, well, I will, uh, I will do my best to answer that, and I'll let John think about it for a second. If there's something specific in, as we prepare the longer facilities plan, if there's something that is like a definite aha change that we need for our ed specs, something, another document that John is very familiar with. But I think over time, we do continue to learn, and lessons learned is an important part of what we do with all of our major projects. We do lessons learned uh, after the project is complete or as we're completing it, so that we can roll that into both the next project, but also our guidance documents. The longer facilities plan is a living document. Uh, so is our ed specs, so are our design standards. They're literally updated, you know, if not every month, almost every month. And so um, I'll be curious if John has come up with any sort of specific uh, item that we think that we'll need to update coming up along with facilities plan. But I think this is, the progress is incremental, these are continual processes. And I think what the district is seeing is we're becoming tighter uh, and more concise and more efficient with kind of every revolution that we do. If that's a project or if that's an update to our documents, I think we're getting more and more concise. John, any, oh, sorry, go ahead, Julia.
I was just saying, actually, there was something just to build off of Director Konstam's comment that I had noted, and these don't come along very often, but I think there are opportunities to address issues, um, like Director Konstam raised, which um, is just like land acquisition. So serving on some other institution boards, like, that's always a constant of looking for nearby properties. And I I think back to, um, it's a the unfortunate, there was an opportunity to buy the bowling alley at a pretty decent, a really decent price that's right next to the Cleveland Field. Um, and, you know, instead, there's a target there. Um, but just, I, you know, I think that's a possibility, and sometimes land costs are prohibitive. But I think we should also be opportunistic if, um, because that may be the only way that we're going to be able to increase. Um, and I'll I don't think we should think like we're forever in this, the exact same footprint. Um, or land swaps, or, you know, other things as a way to address the, the, the constraints that we might have in our properties.
I appreciate that. That's, that's a good point to always, you know, kind of be creative and be on the lookout for what, what's going to be in the district's and the student's best interest. I think something actually that's going to be leading to some of the upcoming sections about visual and performing arts and athletics is also thinking about how to use our sites a different way. And maybe they're not always uh, a site that is specific to a school, but we have, you know, looking at potential hub models in a different way to look and serve our students and maximize the uses of our, of our real estate.
That's exactly right. And and the reason that we chose to do a deep dive into CTE athletics and visual and performing arts today is that they, all three groups, um, mentioned hubs. And and I think that's um in part because of the the information you see on the slides here, our our sites are wildly undersized. Uh, if if you look at really good precedents that are allowed to support an entire high school programming, they're on something like seventy or eighty acres. Right? The biggest site that we have is thirty four acres, and that's a middle school. I think also the, the pandemic, for all the horror that it brought, also was an invitation to rethink time and space for us. Um, we we know we can do distance learning, and we know that um, there are other successful models out there. So I think a a hub is a hub model um, is worth studying closely. And I know it's complicated, and there's lots to figure out, but and I think it's definitely worth studying in the future. So.
No, I think this is fantastic. Um, I know the city at one point was looking at um, land acquisition, um, trying to get the first right of refusal in high, in transportation corridors. Um, rather than uh, putting real estate on the open market where you have a target instead of, you know, something that uh, in in place of housing. Um, rather than uh in putting real estate on the open market where you have a target instead of, you know, something that uh i- in place of housing. And I like the idea of the hub model becau- for sustainability reasons. Because multiple users in one site versus multiple sites with one user makes more sense in an urbanizing environment. In a city that's growing um upward and not necessarily outward because of the urban growth boundary, the constraints of that uh boundary. Um. It it just makes sense to have a facility that's used by um by many.
It does, absolutely, yeah. So are there other um questions, thoughts about high schools? Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Aurora.
Thanks, John. Good evening, Chair to Pass Directors and Student Rep Weinberg. Thank you so much for having me here this evening. Uh, as you heard, my name is Aurora Hema and I'm the Senior Director of College and Career Readiness. And uh I'm going to speak to you a little bit about a portion of our tenure vision for the Career and Technical Education Program. And one aspect of that is have interdisciplinary college and career pathway opportunities for the students in our comprehensive high schools. And this would allow our teachers in our core classes and our CTE courses to work together. To align standards so that students have access to rigorous interdisciplinary instruction in their core courses. And then the application and reinforcement of those standards in their CTE courses. With then opportunities in the core courses to use the career themes and topics of high student interest. To make interdisciplinary connections for learning for students. And we have started this process this year at Benson. We have two college and career pathways up and running. And we're in a planning process for adding another one next year. And we're also in a planning process with McDaniel to uh start. Uh, interdisciplinary pathway uh at the McDaniel site for next year as well. Additionally, part of our vision is uh. Really ensuring that all of our students in our smaller alternative schools and our CBO programs. Have access to the robust CTE course opportunities that our that our students in comprehensive sites have. And that's one suggestion, just as uh Director, uh, sorry, Chair to Pass mentioned, is the opportunity for potentially a district hub model. Where students could travel to a central site such as Marshall, which uh we have built out many CTE labs this year since it's housing Benson. And this would allow those students to have access to programs that don't currently fit on their current campuses. And we've also been working really closely with Misha in the middle school redesign process to ensure that our middle school students in the future. Will have exposure to opportunities in middle school. Uh, for them to learn about the robust CTE programs that are offered in our high school and to have some hands-on experiences that represent those opportunities. But really, the biggest goal of our CTE department is to ensure that we have equitable access to programs, no matter where students live in the city of Portland. And this is a difficult goal to accomplish, just as you are all saying, because uh of the space constraints. And many of our CTE programs do require large spaces and labs. And we have not always been able to meet the industry industry standards that allow um the. The hands-on, real-world application for our students. And and this is including even in some of our new builds. So for example, the construction classroom at Roosevelt was built uh small and we're trying to rectify that through the phase four. Adding that additional lab space and um even the new construction lab going into the Lincoln site. Um, is is not going to meet the industry sizing standards. Uh, but. Uh. And then, uh, John, I think, next slide. Uh, so currently, although we try to make career cluster opportunities available at all of our comprehensive schools. Uh, many of our schools remain unbalanced in the programs that we're able to offer and support. Which is another reason that a central hub might be a viable option for opening access to all students. And then, lastly, industry standards are constantly improving and evolving and changing. So in order for us to ensure that our CTE students have access to programming that truly prepares them for careers after high school. It's important for us that we're continually investing uh in order to remain aligned with those industry standards for the best possible experience for our students.
Aurora, this is Director Konstam. Nice to see you.
Hi, nice to see you.
Going back a couple of slides, uh, when you were talking, excuse me. It's coming through my computer. Um, going back a couple of slides when you're talking about uh working in the middle school redesign and really trying to. Articulate pa- CTE pathways from the middle grades up through high school. Um, can you just talk a little bit more? And I'm trying not to get too far afield from our facilities focus here rather than our programming focus. Um, but can you um just talk a little bit about what you're envisioning as far as? Um, you know, our neighborhood middle schools and their their connectivity to our CTE programming in in our high schools?
Absolutely. So what we've uh started doing is uh working hand in hand with uh the STEAM electives. So many of our middle school students right now are able to participate in what we're calling the STEAM elective. That gives those students the opportunities for the hands-on learning around science, technology, engineering. Um, and math. And we have been co-creating uh project-based learning opportunities with the uh our. Uh, STEAM partners, so that's, and then within those uh project-based learning opportunities. Are uh the chance for students to learn about uh the career that could align with the skills they're learning. As well as the CTE pathways that are available in their high schools. And so that those are some of the ways right now that we're um working with middle schools and then hoping to expand. Because that doesn't, uh, that STEAM elective isn't available at all middle schools and and not definitely not in all of the K eights. But that's the uh, we're really working on the curriculum uh to make the hands-on opportunities. Uh, really uh. Enjoyable for the love of learning for students and and for them to want to dig in deeper as they get to high school. And working on that curriculum so that we can take it to scale across all.
Thank you.
So I would, uh, maybe a similar question, but um. I'm gonna link it to the facilities and I'm I'm not quite sure to how to ask it and I'm not sure maybe this is what you're talking about, but I'm trying to visualize it as like what it actually means for the student. In in middle grades for the um CTE experience, because I know they had like that three-day, the three-day experience. Um, but I'm gonna go back to uh like with the experience that when we had, we had K eights across the district. And all students had access to um like shop, which really was an overview of a lot of different career tracks. Um. And I'm wondering, is when you say STEAM, is that, is that contemplated? Because I know for a lot of students, that's like, it's super hands-on, um, it's very project-based. Um, and three days is not the same as having like it every year as an elective.
You you're absolutely right. And right now, the uh, so uh, we need, we definitely should probably find a better description than just STEAM elective. But uh, that class that we're offering right now is generally an eighth grade class. Um, and it it does provide those uh projects that incorporate um building. And incorporate uh electrical designing and engineering so that the students have. Across that 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 full year of the elective, those different type of opportunities that I think. Uh, you're visualizing that used to happen in a shop. And so that's, and right now we have that in the eighth grade and we are again, a- as I said, in working closely. With Misha as we redesigned that middle school experience to have that uh as a possibility for all three years in middle school and. Um, and really, we agree with you in that that's a much richer experience than just a a three-day kind of uh dabble.
Dabbling is good, but.
Dabbling with Legos is even better. I'm curious if we have um, if the district offers like a Lego robotics. In middle grades. It's it's slightly off topic.
Uh, no, that's uh, it's, there are some clubs. So we do have some teachers who are offering that opportunity as a club, but right now it's not as a organized class.
Uh, I have a couple of questions. Um. So I'm looking at that CTE piece. I love the CTE piece. Um. This is one of the reasons that got me actually in interested in staying interested in school was my middle, my middle school uh shop class. Um, so I I am loving all this. Um, a couple of questions. Um. In this plan, and I know this is more probably a program issue, but when we talk about facility pieces, um. Are we looking at like collaborating with any private institutions to help with that? Like, for instance, construction. You know, they actually have sites that they're always continually working on, whether it's building, I don't know, single-family residence or, you know, multiple. Units. Um. So I go, I ask that first and then I ask the next one.
Okay, uh, thanks. Great question. So right now, uh, what we have set up to help support the experiences for our students is what's called Partner Connect. And so our different uh organizations, businesses, uh entities in the community are able to. Uh, sign up and say their level of uh willingness to partner with our school. So whether it's to host student interns, host teacher externships to come and be a guest speaker. We had many folks speak, for example, at our Tools to Build Your Future Car- Career Event this fall. Um, and so then we have at each of our high schools, we have a career coordinator. And their role is to facilitate uh the opportunities that come up it through the Partner Connect program. With to the teachers in the classrooms, to these and the CTE students. And so that's one way that we do that. And then we do have some really specific partnerships with uh different construction companies that again allow our students. To come on the site and uh also through our contracting, um, uh, our partners that we. Uh, work with are actually required to offer some uh opportunities to engage with our students. Um, in in uh throughout the the process of building our schools. So that's been a really great experience. And I would also say that there's a lot more opportunity for um deeper uh relationships and experiences for students. That right now, it's a lot more exposure than actually uh being able to dig in. And that's something that the state is working um with us and uh have actually re- uh changed the requirements around. What work-based learning looks like in advanced CTE courses. And uh, that's part of the new redesigned uh Federal Perkins Five Act. And so actually just uh this Friday, thank you to you, we have that PD Day, our CTE teachers. Are all able to work with our state representatives from ODE to talk about the new work-based learning requirements. And and what our expectation should be for students in advanced CTE courses. So we're really working to improve that aspect, to really give kids uh insights into what's happening in industry.
Awesome, awesome. So now I got a couple more questions from that. So um, so on the Partner Connect piece is. When I looked at the contracting piece that we do with our contractors and we require them, is it only for those folks that we actually do contracting with? Or can, even if we're not doing contracting, can other organizations reach out to do that as well?
That's a great question. Sorry, and maybe I um misspoke in that. Both are options. So anyone can sign up through Partner Connect. And um through our contracting process, it it is a requirement for for those.
Awesome, awesome. All right. So the other question I had, um, round technology piece and facilities, right? Um, when we are looking out ten years, or we should be looking out ten, twenty years out, out. Um, and we're looking at technology piece, how ready is our buildings or what we need, what do we need to have in order to? Think further along when you're talking about technology, though there's technology with the, no, there's hologram, holographic technologies coming out. Um, there's this, this new, and a lot of the kids know about this coming out now as far as this whole meta world. Piece that Facebook is putting out there, you know, we have all this three D um technology out. How do our facilities currently allow for us to look beyond today and to the next ten, twenty, thirty, forty years out? To be able to adapt to that new technology that's always changing.
And so I will just speak a little bit, because this is definitely not my area of expertise, with the exception that I have um been on many of the design committees. Uh, in our new buildings. And I would say that um, one of the best parts of being on the design committee for Benson, for example. Is uh really the flexibility of space. So I think that our modernization team just did such a great job in really helping. Us think about what does a flexible space look like? And maybe we have this specific CTE program for the next ten years. But in fifty years, how should we design a space flexible enough to be able to make that shift? So so my just like small insight would be uh really that that having that foresight of flexibility. And uh, Dan or John, I don't know if you want to jump into that, so.
I think you nailed it, Aurora, yeah. Alright, thank you. Are there other questions for Aurora? Great, alright.
Aurora, with the, um, with the swing site at Marshall that we've invested in so heavily for CTE use at. Um, while Benson is there, do we have any long-term uh use identified for that? Or does the CE, CTE component basically leave when the equipment leaves? I don't know how much is actually built in there.
So I think that there's a lot of space uh moving forward that's going to be able to potentially be CTE use for. For the foreseeable future. So I know, for example, and again, if that's going to be a swing site for, say, Cleveland or the other high schools as we modernize that. Modernize, even after they're gone, the space for the automotive program that we're building right now and the space for that construction site, I think. Will always be available as a as CTE site. So that's why I think it it potentially could be a great hub option, moving forward after the modernizations because of the infrastructure that we've put in place. And 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 it has been expensive for us to add all of the ventilation requirements and all of the electrical outlets and and the safety pieces that we've put in. So it would be, um, I think, a really good use of that space moving forward. Um.
Directors, good evening. Uh, Jonathan Garcia, Chief of Staff here. Uh, Director Hollins, appreciate your question. Uh, as many of you know, in the twenty twenty bond, uh, we said, uh, thanks to our generous uh voters. We um uh uh assigned or aligned a number of resource, of financial resources to upgrade our technology across our schools. I believe our chief uh technology officer is on, uh, and maybe he can give a quick uh synopsis of kind of what that project looks like.
Yes, thank you and good evening, everyone. Um, yes, thank thankfully to the to the great um generosity of all of our voters. One of the things that we're doing right now across all of our buildings is upgrading all of the the technology components. The 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 core central issue in all of these pieces is whether it's virtual reality, artificial intelligence, machine learning is is bandwidth and the access to bandwidth. And so. A big push for what we're doing, infrastructure upgrades and our classroom modernization upgrades is what is is making sure that we have those pathways. Replacing the fiber optics that connect our wiring closets in our different buildings across every one of our buildings, not just the schools that we're modernizing. We're also in the middle of a process of converting from static uh bandwidth-constrained backbones. That that are provided by uh incumbent carrier to dark fiber, which gives us a little bit of unlimited fiber across all of our buildings. We're about a third of the way through there. We will be all the way through that process by the end of the year. So we're trying to address the now, but also to build the capacity for that ten-year, twenty-year, forty years in the future. That we have the underpinnings to be able to support those things, what you're talking about, the holograms and virtual reality and and all of those pieces. So it's it's in process right now as we speak.
And and maybe you did say this, Don, but I just wanted maybe uh highlight that last week, we we did announce that. Uh, we had become a one-to-one uh school district, meaning that every student in our district now is equipped with their own laptop, their own computer. That they can bring back and forth uh to school. Don, do you want to speak a little bit to that?
Yeah, that's in in specifically in our and our students in grades. Yeah, that's in specifically in our, and our students in grades three through 12. They've all been delivered their one-to-one device. It's available for them to, to work back and forth from home. Some schools are a little bit delayed on that. I want to be, I want to be fair. And upfront about this, the protective cases are stuck right in the middle of some of the supply chain issues. They're supposed to show up this month. So some of them have held off on that to make sure that those are protected when, when they start sending them home. And we're in over a two-to-one ratio in our, in our PK to two classrooms. So the devices that, that our students need to be able to take advantage of this technology and to take advantage of the opportunities that our amazing folks in teaching and learning and, and our CTE programs and that, that they have the tools to be able to leverage that wherever they're at.
Awesome. This is a great stuff, y'all. I'm, I'm just like grinning ear to ear over here about this. Now, one more question and I'll be done for this. When we talk about the one-to-one devices piece that Mr. Garcia talked about, how are we looking as far as move as technology changes, upgrading that technologies, you know, on an ongoing basis?
That is, that is a longer-term conversation. That's, that's a conversation we're going to have to address in the next couple of years. When, when we had, we had a plan when we were looking at an eight-year bond, we shifted to a four-year bond. So we're right there. It'll be part of those conversations on what do we do next? Whether it's through a next bond or how do we, how do we leverage funds that we currently can potentially put away? Or it, it's a conversation that we have to have and that we will continue to have. It's, it's, we can't step away from it. We'll continue to, to embrace this change and move forward through it and, and make sure we make the decisions we need to, to be able to support this.
And, and that is something we can, and I don't know who, who can answer this, but that's something that we can address in the next bond that's coming up, right?
Absolutely.
Director Hollins, there are a number of ways to, you know, to look at this. I, I also know that at the state level, you know, legislators are, have had conversations about what the, what does the future of, of school look like with technology? And how does the federal government, how do the state government support these types of, this future, right? And so I think, you know, you'll see that more and more districts across the country are transitioning, obviously, to, to upgrading. And, and, you know, again, we are fortunate enough that we are ahead of the game, frankly, compared to our, our counterparts across the country. And that's again, because of our generous support from our, our voters who put this in the bond. Frankly, you all put this on the bond and, you know, and the voters approved it. So we're ahead of the game in many regards. And so we just look forward to, you know, getting support and resource again from our legislators up and down state and federal.
But I love the question, Director Hollins, because I like how you're thinking ahead, which is the whole point of the long-range facilities plan. Technology isn't going to look the way it looks today. So what does it mean to have a refresh plan for devices when we don't know what devices are going to be in our kids' hands? Or what industries are going to emerge and how we best prepare them? Do we have a space where we can adapt to adopt those things? So I love the questioning and they're the right questions.
Agree with that for sure. Are there other questions for Aurora before we move on? It's a great conversation. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. So I'd like to invite our Senior Director of Athletics, Marshall Haskins. If Marshall, if you are out there, you care to unmute and tell us about your program vision?
Sure. Hey, everybody. Good, good evening. I'm sorry, I'm a little occupied. Our Grant girls, we're playing in the semifinals out of Delta Park and we just won one-zero. So I'm a little, little excited for them. Little, little off a little bit right now.
Thank you for that.
Hey, yay. And don't the boy, Grant boys play as well?
So. Let me see if I can get to here. Okay, so good evening, Chair de Pass and Board Members, Student Rep and Superintendent Guerrero. As John said, I'm Marshall Haskin, Senior Director Athletics. Thanks for providing this opportunity for me to speak to you on behalf of PLO Athletics, our students and the Portland community members as we look forward to making investment into our facilities. I've, I've been presented the opportunity to speak to you about the long-term facilities related athletics. This has been a great opportunity for me not only to serve on the committee, but to walk through the process to identify the needs for athletics for the next 10 years. I want to thank Dan and John, especially John, and their team for working diligently to help, help us identify the needs of the athletic department. Their integrity and commitment to the process has been amazing and ensuring that this long-range facility plan responds to the needs of students and is aligned with the greatest strategic vision for PPS. Here are a couple of examples of, of concerns that we face in athletics. Because we feel like, as John mentioned, the athletic, the buildings were built in the 50s, 30s, 40s. And clearly, the need for the athletic facilities we need today were not even conceived of. I mean, soccer didn't even exist in America at that time. And it's probably our biggest sport now. But here's a couple of examples. Like as I say, even right now, I'm at Delta Park. At the game, we won one-zero, but we're playing a CrossFit Philograp at, at Delta Park because Grant doesn't have a stadium. So arguably, the best girls tournament, best girls soccer program in the state can't even play his home games. To complicate that, we're at Delta Park. It is a tough place to be at night with the homeless people around here. I mean, literally, two weeks ago, a, a guy came up to our girls and masturbated right in front of them while we're out here. So the need for us to have our own facilities to keep our sis safe and not having to travel all over is, is a very important thing. Gary knows Benson Roosevelt tracks have been repaired so many times that Atlas, the Atlas Company refuses to repair them anymore because they're just down to the concrete. Bond projects that were completed, two, three, $400 million facilities, athletics were not addressed. They were in the original thinking and plan, but got value engineered out. In our last bond, there was $35 million that we originally set aside to deal with some of our athletic issues. When the bond went from 650 to 1.23 million, billion, athletics went to zero. So there hasn't been an investment in, in our facilities for athletics. Currently, none, I mean, zero of our athletic facilities meet the needs of a full athletic program. That includes Madison, that we turf the other field for baseball, softball. But right now, Madison still serves probably half of those athletic programs off campus because it doesn't have the acreage to have that. And then where they do that is wherever we can literally find that, with collaboration with Park Bureau and other places we can rent. No middle school has a facility equipped for our PLU sports programs. Students must miss class to play games at the only time there's a lot. So we have to get out of school at two o'clock to be able to get to a game that can start at four because Park Bureau unless they use their fills from four to six o'clock. And that means kids are going all over the whole city and all over metropolitan area. Students at Lincoln are practicing at 10 o'clock at night routinely because there's nowhere else for them to practice. So we're doubling up or tripling up with other schools for them to be able to have places to practice. And then schools are renting facilities on their own through their booster clubs, or we're renting facilities outside our district just to have a normal athletic experience. So many people have talked about the constraints. I'm going to skip the, John, you can skip the first three slides because they kind of address the, 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 the concerns and the constraints. And I'll just draw it right into what we think is a potential solution for us. The long-term, long-range facilities plan and the three athletic hubs that are mentioned, plus the eight middle school hubs, addressed inequities and deficiencies mentioned above, with additional multipurpose fills, serve, which will serve to cover all around, all around door activities, our sports, our pools, our tennis courts and lights. Every high school has a need for what we prioritize in our hubs that will be provided. The three regional hubs plus the four, as we looked at prioritizing what we can cover originally, four middle school hubs will provide the following seven things that we think are very, very important. One is we become less dependent on Portland Parks and Recreation. For example, 616 high school swimmers did not have a swim season last year. The only sport out of all the OSA activities that didn't have a sport for PIO was swimming because of Park Bureau refuses, refuse to open up their pools a couple of weeks early to accommodate us. So 600 kids didn't get to participate. Many of them seniors, many of them who have scholarship opportunities didn't get to have their senior year. There's inequity by providing multiple sites so that all PPS lower levels are playing on turf and not in the mud. Well, again, using Madison example, we can have football practice for three levels or two levels. And then we can have soccer practice on the other fields for one or two levels. But we actually have eight soccer teams at Madison High School. So where, where do they practice? What are we going to do with them? Right now, they're going to middle schools that some of the, the grounds are level, some of them are not. Some of them have holes. None of them are turfed. So as, yeah, we finished, we finished McDaniels, I'm sorry, not Madison. But we still didn't provide what we really need for the rest of our athletic program for that school. The athletic field for Jefferson, as a result of the new building and the potential footprint, Jefferson, other than the football field that's there, all the other, all the other outdoor activities, sports will have to be relocated. Access to athletic facilities for multiple pathways to graduation. Right now, they want to, they play volleyball, they play soccer, they have basketball. They want to have inter, other intramural leagues and we literally have nowhere for them. We are, you know, one day a week, we can try to find a place for them to practice when a high school team is having a game. Those things, but there's no place that they could call home or they know they can have for regular practice or anything. Same thing with our club sports. We have lacrosse, which is a very growing sport in our district. We have rugby that's growing. And literally, we're having to rent places for them to play. Like I literally rent Delta Park because Park Bureau doesn't give it to us. We rent Delta Park. So Grant Lacrosse, now remember, Grant is on Broadway, Delta Park is almost to Washington. Lacrosse has to come out here to practice because we have no place for them to practice. And that's with the bowl and the upper Philly grant. Earliest, earlier competitions, games and practices during the week. By having our hubs, we'll have the three more sites with multipurpose fills and lights. So we'll be able to start practice after school and instead of going at 10 o'clock, everything will be done around eight o'clock for us, which is a major, major improvement. And then the last thing that was mentioned before is there is a higher probability that we can meet our expects. There's no way with the current footprint that we can meet the aspects at, at any of our high schools with exception of maybe Wells, but the rest of them, there's no way. The hubs gives us a chance to meet that. For example, the hub will provide 200, a minimum of 227 athletic facility opportunities for high school, multiple class graduation and PLU sports. So for example, I give you high school, Benson High School will have 12 more field access opportunities as a result of our hubs. Cleveland will have 14, Grant will have 14. Lincoln needs 27 additional out, out, outdoor opportunities to meet their athletic needs. Jefferson will be 16, McDaniel will be 12, Roosevelt will be 12, Wells will be 16. Multiple paths to graduation will be 14. PLU Sports, which currently has to try to share corners of facilities with high school because there's nowhere else for them to be. It'll be 64 opportunities, athletic opportunities. And the intramural sports 14. Those are minimums that will happen as a result of us having our hubs. So as we talk about other things that the hubs will provide for us, there's unofficial weekend use that everyone uses when our facilities are closed. Honestly, they come through the fence or what have you, or we leave them open for walkers or joggers around our tracks. We have, will be additional use for CUB to be able to rent those facilities to generate revenue. And then, as you know, we have a couple of pretty high-profile signature events in PLO like our Pacific Office Automation Girls Basketball Tournament, where we'll have 144 teams and over 1,400 girls there this year. We can do it on our own property and our own facilities as a result of us having our hubs. So I'll stop there and just say that clearly there's a tremendous need for us to have hubs for high school and middle school sports. This is a great opportunity for the district to meet the needs of our kids. And more importantly, to make an investment in athletics that we clearly have not made for over 70 years. So I'll stop there and take questions.
Director Haskin, this is Director Konstam, and you paint a very dire picture there. But one, one thing, there's two things that occurred to me that you didn't mention. One is the safety issues that our kids are experiencing. We have trainers telling us they're seeing just absolutely unequaled levels of injuries from kids who are playing on these, not just that they're not turf fields, they're not even level fields. They've got gopher holes there, you know, seeing incredible rate of injuries. And not to mention the effects of, as you mentioned, practicing until like 10:30 or 11 at night, particularly when you have an hour commute. And then the other one, which I thought your department did such a, some amazing things with over the summer, is just the intersection of our athletics programming with our, you know, violence prevention strategies, which are so critical right now for the district. And I think we, it was wonderful to see those innovative programs that we had over the summer. But there's just a ton of data and research that says the better we are with creating these healthy and positive opportunities for our kids, the, the more we can avoid that.
Thanks for pointing those out. I mean, I, I think, yeah, I'll just leave it at that. Thanks for pointing those out.
Director Haskins, it's Chair de Pass, and I can't see the slide very big, but on the Whittaker Adams site, is that a pool? That's, is that a pool in the rendering?
Yeah. So in the pool, there's a pool. We don't currently own a pool in PPS. And so we're at the whim of wherever else we can get to. So our goal is to try to have a, a pool at all three of our hubs or in the vicinity. So we are, John and I are just trying to plan through. I bet somebody mentioned the, 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 the building at Marshall. And we're like, what is that going to be when they leave? Because it's a perfect size for aquatic center, right? I mean, so we're looking for where we can have those. We want them to be Olympic sized, not just 25 meters, because we know that then swimming is a life, a lifelong sport. And so we want to get as many kids involved in swimming as possible. One of the things Amy mentioned, and prior to Principal Newsen leaving Rosa Parks, we actually offer swimming to every student at Rosa Parks. Because the thought was that community is not swimming, it's lifesaving. So we, we want pools to the best of our ability to be at the places. So we, we're planning to have one at Marshall, have one at Whittaker. And then the third one, we're trying to figure out where the, where the best place to be over in Southwest would be. Because currently they have Southwest Community Center, they have Jewish Community Center, they have PCC, and they have the MAC club, right? So it's like, is there, is there? But that's not, that's not a, 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 a competition pool. It's a
Oh, yeah, no.
Yeah, it's a recreational pool. So to have a competition pool. So we're trying to figure out, is it, does it warrant us to just get a better partnership with some people over there versus build our own for that community?
Right, right. I know, I know from working for parks a long time ago, there's a high demand for aquatic centers. And I agree, every child should learn how to swim. Should have access to those, you know, early swim opportunities because it is a lifelong pursuit. Can do it when you're, you know, young. Can do it when you're, you know, young, um, and really old.
Direct- Director Haskins, uh, this is Julia Brim Edwards, um. So uh thanks for sharing your vision um on the swimming. I just have to ask is like, I hope that um the swimming didn't stop just because Principal Newsom retired. Um, so I hope that's an ongoing thing, it made it sound like it was past tense.
Well, Co- Co- COVID hit also, so we kinda haven't picked it back up, but it is our intent to pick it back up.
Cuz I know that's something that lots of people in the community talked about that made the school unique. Um, so I really appreciate seeing the vision. Um, I had a couple, um, and you know, I think this is because, uh, partly because P I L Athletics has been sort of wildly successful. And not only, um, you know, what's changed over the years is um lots more, lots more sports. But us, uh, female athletes and um the addition of uh middle, middle school sports. Um, and that'll take some more places to play. So one of the questions I would have is with this um proposal, would, would in fact. The Title Nine issues that we have so struggled with because of our smaller footprint be addressed?
Yes, so I, I, I actually, I actually accidentally skipped over that line. This, this would address all of our Title Nine issues. Because we will be putting turf baseball softball at each one of our sites. And several of them will have multiple turf baseball and softball, uh because if you look at the plans there, they overlap. Uh, so baseball softball is in the spring, in the fall, those would be soccer fields. So you can see where they overlap, the Whittaker looks like there's two or three. At Marshall, it provides the same plan that we have at um, at uh, at uh Grant now. That would dress that for Cleveland, uh baseball softball. Um, the other thing that the um hubs do is it, 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 it takes care of Title Nine. But it also takes care of safety. Because when we're in the parks, we have no control over what's happening around us. So like just going from Powell Park and uh the park that's three miles from Cleveland where they play softball. Uh, there's all kind of homeless there, but when we get to Marshall, we can enclose our own facility and make it safer for our kids. That, that we'll be to have as well.
Well, I'm, I'm glad you raised that cuz that was my next question. So um, so check, you addressed uh Title Nine. Um, so one of the things, I'm looking at the structures and having spent a lot of time at Fern, at Fern Hill. And the Whittakers, Fern Hill Park and Whittaker, um, which are adjacent to each other. Um, you know, right now, there's no school district infrastructure there, unlike uh Marshall and Jackson. So how, how do we sort of protect those assets? I mean, it, it's so, so not just, this isn't just a fill, facilities investment. So if you're looking at, there's fields um there, but if you're like running a pool, the whole like cost of operations. Is that like built, is that built out somewhere? And then is that an enclosed space um that, you know, if you have to have a permit to use? Or is that an open space? Um, I'm just curious cuz we don't, we don't have anything at Whittaker.
So selfish, so selfishly from the athletic department, the best days of athletics is when we had our own facility at Marshall. Where we had gym space, we had the fields, we had those things. So we view that as the same as this, that our whole athletic department will move there. Um, yes, there'll be, we'd have to hire swimming cuz you gotta have our aquatic director, lifeguards and all that stuff. So that would be the only thing that would be happening after. In terms of the rest of the time, the rest of the facilities will be managed by us, just like we've done all over other facilities.
Thank you, I had a question about that too, about the programming piece. Because I know aquatic uh programming and just community center programming is very involved. I'm, I'm not an expert by any means, but I, I'm expert enough to know that it's, it takes a specialty to do that type of programming. And but that's when it's for community use. Anyway, I was just curious about that, who would be, would we hire consultants?
So we, so we would, yeah, so we're, we're gonna, we're, we have to have an aquatics director. That's not something we wanna play with around student safety. But we also wanna have a product director cuz we wanna build swimming programs. We want to say, any kid in P P S that wants to learn how to swim, we should have a program in place for them. That's, that's free of charge, it's not, you know, you have to pay, to have somebody should be, you come, you wanna learn to swim, you learn to swim. And then we go from little swimmers to little dolphins to sharks to whatever as you grow up. To eventually window with swimming programs at all of our high schools that are robust. And right now, to be honest, this is, this is an issue of equity. At our, at our majority white schools, higher S E S, we have swimming teams of a hundred kids. At our lower S E S kids, I mean pools, I mean schools, we have teams with, like in Jefferson, I think our numbers range from one to seven. You know, at Roosevelt, because we did have the program at, at uh Rosa Parks, we've gotten up to twenty, twenty-five. Benson has wanted to have a swim program, we don't have a pool for them to be able to swim at. So we, we know there's a great need um to have a pool, have multiple pools. And then provide the, the correct direction and guidance from a aquatics director.
That's fantastic, and I think the beginning is a, it's a guppy. Or he started a tadpole, but um. My other question then was about, um, just in general, are we? And I think it says in the, in the long-range facilities plan that we're using the racial equity lens to make priority decisions. And is that the case where are we looking at socioeconomic status? And race and other demographics when we look at, and, and need where there's higher need when we prioritize these projects? Or how, how are those decisions?
Well, the hubs were made strictly on the fact that we need facilities, I'll just be frank, we need facilities. But when I go back and look at where those, who will be utilizing those facilities. Then you can see that across the board, hold on. Yes, they won, oh, this is Margaret, 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 I'm still on the call.
Oh, shoot.
Yeah, I'm sorry, okay, yeah, glad we won, awesome. Sorry about that, Margaret came to my, my door. So um, so regardless of that, but then when we looked at where our middle school programs. Then clearly you can see we tried to get something in every quadrant of the city. Uh, but we obviously at George, at Roseway High, Harrison Park, Lane. I mean, those are five pretty um low S E S type schools that we have prioritized. Place where we would have our middle school athletic hubs. So yes, yes, and yes.
So this, this is a question for um, uh, not for you, Marshall. Um, probably one of the academics, um, but for the, just the Whittaker site. Um, have we made the long-term decision that we don't need a, a, a middle school or a school site there? If you look at the sort of bigger district map, there is um this big vast space. Where um with the closure of Whittaker and before that Adams, um, there is a big kind of area where there's not a middle school. And I'm, I'm just curious whether we've made that determination. Because once you put in a pool, I don't think there's gonna be like a, a replacement. For a middle school.
And so I can chime in here and just say that there is a board resolution that asks us to look at a mid- middle school location on this site. Before investigating any other uses, so we would certainly look at that very, very closely before pursuing the, the athletics hub here.
Uh, Julia, I'll personally answer, uh, four years ago, five years ago. I mean, we needed the athletic hub before I even got this job. So five years ago, I went in and I asked that question. And I was told that, that what John just said, the resolution, we're gonna look at a middle school there. And we probably couldn't do anything in Whittaker because they were gonna build a, a school. We've been fighting to have Whittaker, we know we need Whittaker because it solves a lot of our uh needs. In that particular community over there, um, so. We've always asked for it and hopefully we could be moved in that direction.
Also, before we, we leave our conversation about athletics, I just wanna go back to when we mentioned. Um, the ability to be nimble about acquiring um land and about perhaps swapping land. And we have a phenomenal athletic resource in the heart of our district that is in play right now in Concordia. And uh I, I, I bug Chief of Staff Garcia regularly on this and I know we have it in our sites. But it's just, um, I think it's important for us to remember to, to try to be nimble in service to our kids. And figure out how we might make those kind of opportunities happen.
Rumor has it, the Lloyd Center is gonna be going for sale.
Joe's caramel corn is not going anywhere.
But Joe caramel corn is gonna stay where it is.
I had just, I'm so, sorry, one last question about this and it can also be answered offline. But I just wonder about all the transportation, having been a parent who had three kids who played. And like, you know, in the middle of afternoon, getting kids all over the city, um, if they didn't have. So as my kids went to high schools that didn't have home fields, um, driving around is just like. Um, I guess the cost and the climate impact of whether we've considered that. Cuz a hub just implies that you've got more people on buses or students driving themselves. Or parents driving car pools.
Well, I, Julia, I actually think it's um, we're already busing people to places, so that doesn't change. I think where we bussed them do changes. Like, for example, when Lincoln Baseball was playing at Hillsborough, they were driving to Hillsborough. Well, now they shouldn't, they don't have to drive to Hillsborough cuz we should have somewhere within that community, three or four miles or less. Where they can either just go after school or we can get them there. Uh, for games, we've always, we, we, we tried to provide transportation to all the schools, that will continue. Uh, like you take Grant, instead of Grant going to uh Delta Park, Grant can go to, go to Whittaker. I'm not sure we have to provide transportation to that. Cleveland could go to Marshall, uh, which is down the street versus all the other places that they're going. So I think, yes, there will be a need for transportation, I think it will be lesser than it currently is for us and safer for us.
And if I may, uh, this is Jonathan Garcia, uh, we also just had a, a, a recent discussion with uh our counterparts at P P. You know, to really begin to think about, you know, how we uh work together to address the, um, you know, the climate change uh impacts. And so uh working together strategically, not for, not only in terms of the short term, but really the long-term implications. Of what, what does transportation look like in, in a city like ours, um, you know, addressing some of these issues? So, you know, of course, any, any of these conversations are really long-term. These are uh really element, you know, we're, uh, we're just at the beginning stages of these conversations. But, but it's giving you kind of an indication about the, the seriousness of, of addressing, you know, uh, issues like climate change. Um, so I just wanted to add that to the, to the conversation.
Thank you.
Can I do just a really brief time check? Um, we still have a few more slides, um, and then we're gonna get to visual arts, so, um, does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah. One quick mention before we leave athletics, sorry, Andrew, was that you or Gary, sorry. Uh, just a quick mention, um, Marshall, the point that you made about early dismissals is absolutely no joke. And it's a, it's a serious equity issue for our kids. My student athletes would miss a quarter of their school day twice a week. On a, on a, on an eight-class schedule where you have four classes a day, they would miss one class um twice a week. So that's a significant impact on their educational experience.
All right, I, I, you know, I, you guys know, you guys know I'm have some questions. Um, Marshall, how's it going, sir? Congratulations on the win.
We won one zero, but I think we're gonna lose, we're losing two zero right now in Ben, so. Fifty percent is Hall of Fame, so we're happy.
Great, great, a couple, couple, couple of questions. Um, on the site, and I'm, I'm only gonna be talking about Whittaker Adams site, you know, so, uh, to make sure I'm clear. Um, what size pool is that, did you guys have on here?
Uh, fifty meters.
Is that five laps?
Olympic, that's Olympic size, so you don't have to go down and back, it's just one time for the shortest race, which is fifty meters.
Okay, and it looked like you got, what, four basketball courts there?
Yeah, what we're trying to do, uh, as John has tried to convince, help me understand is, this is kind of our crude. Um, crude scan because part of the, there's a question about, um, what is? John's probably gonna get mad at me, but what is, what is Park Bureau really doing, right? So is Park Bureau ma- gonna maintain that oval there with the track around it, right? Then if they're maintaining that, then the question is, do I have to put a football field on our front? Which then allows us to build more, like we've been asking, we have some classrooms. Can we expand our gym from four to six courts? Can we add tennis courts? Cuz we don't have tennis courts, really, we don't own tennis courts over there anywhere, right? So, so we're looking at if we were able to move that field, John and I are talking about this, literally, I think tomorrow in a meeting. Uh, adding uh four to eight tennis courts and expanding our basketball to get to six courts instead of to four.
Great. So, so it'd be, it would, if, help me if I'm, make sure I'm right. So it would be more advantageous to be able to have more space to do more stuff on that site.
I, I think that we're gonna try to meet all of the needs that we have for our programming. And to the best, I mean, John talked, told me, well, we can build up, right? It's like, okay, well, I know, I wanna have everything that we need to do all our three hubs. That we can meet the needs of athletic program, to wherever that has to be.
So that would, so that would be a yes, you, it would be more advantageous for you to have more space and for more fields.
Uh, well, we have all the fills we need, so no.
Okay, okay, so.
We have all the fills we need, for sure.
Okay, so what I'm saying, so, so what you're telling me is on this Whittaker site, the three fields is what you guys need to have, right? Plus the, the overlay of the multi-field with the baseball and the softball.
So all, so all of the fields has to be multipurpose. Because baseball's in the spring and socks and soccer's in the fall, that, that makes sense, okay.
So make sure I'm clear, well, what you're saying, your needs for Whittaker site is the three fields, that's multi-use. The fifty-meter pool that you're out and looking at over there and a couple of baseball stuff and little parking. So that's what you're saying that P P S needs are currently.
Yes, I would, yes, that's, if that, if you're asking me, do we have on here what we can put on the screen, yes.
Great, great.
I also wanna be clear.
Hold on, let me, I'm not done, Jonathan, hold on, let me send, let me get my answer, my person's out. Um, are these fields, practice fields or game fields?
Both, they're turf fields.
Okay, well, I, I was thinking do games on them as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And again, part of that is that that allows us to meet any requirement, like the Title Nine requirement. Or an inequity requirement around, some schools get to play on turf and some get to be on grass. By going turf, everybody gets the same.
Yep, great, um, on the, on the Whittaker site. What is anticipation number of kids that will be able to participate on that site and say in a weekly?
I, I, I don't, I don't have, I didn't, I didn't build out the operational uh capacity. Um, I, I wasn't asked to do that, we were just asked to build what we will want, I mean, I could go back and figure that out.
Okay, yeah, that'd be cool. And I know you guys probably haven't built out everything on that site as far as lighting and, you know, a lot of those on the west and the east side of that. Literally bust up against houses, you know, for lighting issues. Um, so I, I mean, that's just, just for, you know, you guys knowledge, I'm sure you guys know this cuz you guys dealt with it at Grant as well.
Um, yeah, well, right now, Gary, they have these unbelievable, unbelievable uh directional lights that don't leave a footprint. That don't bleed.
Right, awesome, awesome. All right, those are, those are questions I have, thank you.
I, I wanted to um say that I think there, there aren't tennis courts on that site, but there are tennis courts adjacent to that site.
Yeah, so there's two, but two doesn't fit any high school's need, right? So if you have a team of fourteen girls, two courts do nothing for you. And that's part of the issue we have with tennis, is that all of our places are two. And that's why at Jackson, we're trying to get six to eight, because now we have a place that we can have enough tennis courts.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I see that, thank you.
So it is all, so the space that you're talking about at Whittaker, right? There's, from what I'm hearing, you guys say, I'm hearing you say for even all the three hubs, there is no need for any indoor spaces outside of basketball and volleyball and pool. So indoor baseball, things like, I'm just thinking about the weather, you know, that we have here.
So in, so inside, Gary, at all of our sites, we have hitting cages that are inside. We have mats that we put down where they can do infield and things like that inside. All, we do that at every high school gym and all across our district.
Okay, and so for the Whittaker site, when we talked about, when we, when there was talk earlier about, um, being able to use space for multiple, multiple things, um, would this space, the, what you guys are building, be an option for, uh, stuff like arts and performing arts and things like that as well?
Well, is it currently constructed? I don't think that we built it to say you have a sound music studio or anything like that. Could you, just like at any other facility, you could set it up to build a stage and do performances? I mean, you could do that because you have four or five basketball courts, that's a pretty big venue.
If I may, I, I do want to bring this back because, uh, I want to make sure that the conversation, um, the long-range facilities plan is a vision document. It is not going into the details of how many, uh, sites or how many tennis courts. That, that is something that we would endeavor in a master planning, a conceptual planning, uh, process, um, that Dan, uh, you can speak to a little bit. So while I appreciate, I think, a lot of the, you know, the discussion here in terms of, you know, what is hopeful. I think what we're hearing from, uh, our senior director, Haskins, is the, the need, uh, for facilities. And specifying, you know, the need for, um, these, uh, what this concept of a, a athletic hub will look like. So I just want to make sure that, that, that it's clear to the audience that we're not here designing a future hub uh, in detail as much as we're giving a conceptual understanding, a vision for where, uh, a future athletic hub could do to address, uh, the long, uh, longstanding issues of athletic deficiency, uh, uh, space deficiency. So I just want to make sure that our, our, our community understands, uh, the nuances here.
Yeah, and Jonathan, and I agree with that, but I also think our community will want to know what is being proposed. At least I know the Cully Neighborhood Association, uh, Association would love to know what's being proposed and how it's being proposed.
Absolutely, and any, anything like that, we would do, community engagement as a district.
Yeah, and that, but, and that's what I'm saying, so these are questions that are coming from the community. You know, as far as what is it gonna look like, what is it going to be there, how the lighting is going to be? So these are questions that's coming directly from the community, from the, the Cully community, especially because it sits on, on their side. Uh, the Cully Neighborhood Association, so these are questions and these are valid questions that, that needs to be, that they want to have answers to. Even if, even in a conceptual, um, process, they want to know what's going on. Especially since that community has been asking, just like Marshall was saying, even before, for a long time, what's going on with that piece? With that place?
Appreciate the conversation, um, did you have any more, um, questions, Director Hollins? And we've got staff waiting to, um, excitedly to talk about the visual arts, uh, programming as well. Visual and performing arts.
Oh, no, I'm good, thank you.
I have one last very quick question, which is, um, uh, Director Haskins, in, in the long-range facilities plans, the only two, um, assets that are identified as unused for the district are Whittaker and Smith. So is that property, um, on the south side of Jefferson, on the south side of Alberta, considered part of the Jefferson complex?
I'd have to let John, uh, I know unfortunately, when I went to Jefferson there, we practiced football there every day, but I don't think people have been using it. And I think that people had talked about trying to use it to build something and there's some gas line or something underneath that is prohibitive, prohibitive to my knowledge.
Because it is an asset we own that I didn't see called out in here.
I can jump in real quick, uh, that, that we do consider that part of the Jefferson campus. It's relatively small, I think it's an acre or acre and a half, it's a pretty small site and, and the master plans, if I recall right, uh, it was identified as a potential, like some practice fields there. It's not big enough to put even, uh, a baseball field on and we don't own the entire block either, we just own a partial of it.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Oh, that, last, last, but I know this is conceptual, I just want to, what is the cost? So for instance, we're looking at putting a bond together and adding athletics, um, what would be the cost? What, what do you think our estimate, guestimate cost for something like this, for all three sites?
Yeah, Director Hollins, that's a great question, uh, we haven't crept that far into this. The longer facilities plan doesn't align, um, by nature doesn't align funding and costs with the scope. It, if we took the whole, the entire, uh, longer facilities plan, that would be many billions of dollars. And what the intent of this is, is to identify kind of like the, the big picture, what are your big picture goals? Now, when you have to start aligning your schedule and your budget around a general obligation bond, that is the time when we start focusing, getting our kind of parametric estimates uh, on scope that we'll likely be in the bond, you know, you know, let's say the bond is X, we might do parametric uh, estimates for X scope times two or three and then get more and more refined as we get closer to our actual bond referral. That makes sense.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, thank you, I, I didn't know that, so I'm learning on this as well. And, and I don't know if this is a question that could be asked now or not, um, but as, as accepting this, um, the whole facility piece in, in whole as a board, um, I guess my question, and this is just, and this is just to the board, you know, I, I don't know how we, I didn't, I don't know how we went from a six million, six hundred and fifty million dollar bond with thirty-five million dollars, um, for athletics to one point one billion dollars to zero money for athletics. But I just want to know if there's going to be a commitment from the board, whether it's the sports, whether it's my sports idea or Marshall's sports site, I mean, the, the hub piece, are we going to have a commitment to actually put this in a bond so we can get this for our kids? And that's a board question, and I want the public to know, are we going to be serious about doing this? Like I said, I don't, it, it doesn't matter if it's the Albana Sports Complex or something like this. I'm just looking at what are we going to be looking at to invest in our kids and are we going to have a commitment from our board to make sure that whatever we put in our bond is going to have money for our athletic, for our kids?
Well, I, I mean, I'll just jump in, I, I don't think it's necessarily the conversation for tonight around the Longridge Facilities Plan. I, I'm absolutely willing to, to look at that. I, I'm not willing to commit to anything in the future bond, because I think once, when, when we start planning that, right? We've got to go back to, you know, when I think about the last bond, the Center for Black Student Excellence was not in it, right? And Jefferson was not in it, um, and there were lots of sort of discussions and changes and, and sort of focus on what's the highest priority. If athletic investment is the highest priority come next bond, then absolutely I'll back that. But, but I think we as a board need to be looking at, at priorities across the district to sort of figure that out. The other thing we'll need to do, to be really frank, is take the political calculus into effect. How big a bond will we be able to get, um, you know, and, and that, that's going to matter a lot in terms of what gets in there. So I mean, I guess what I would say, maybe back to you, Director Hollins, are, are you saying that athletics is the top priority for the district for the next bond?
I, I think it, it has been a, a priority from my understanding, it's, it's been a, a priority for years. So whether it's a top priority at this level or the next bond level, but it's been a priority because we have, we've had, had field deficiencies for years. So I think it's absolutely a, a priority for our kids to have this. And the fact that it was on the one before and then got taken off shows that it was a priority. And how it got taken off, I don't know, I wasn't part of those conversations, but we had two other bonds even before that. And there was, from my understanding, no money given for athletics either. So I don't think it's necessary, do, do we feel it's a priority because we know it's a priority for our kids, but are we going to act on those priorities?
Well, I'll agree it's a priority, but I think having a Center for Black Student Excellence was also a priority. And I think getting Jefferson remodelled is also a priority.
I agree, I agree, I agree with that, but once again, though, this has been, this has been a party even before the Center stopped Black Student Excellence. And we know the, the Center for Black Student Excellence came about because of the political and the racial tensions that happened. If it hadn't been for that, if it hadn't been for George Floyd dying and the protest and all that stuff, we would not, we would have not been talking about the Center for Black Excellence, just like they hadn't talked about it for previous years before that. When Rodney King incident happened or when a number, number of, uh, incidents happened right here in Portland. So to, to say that that was a part, that that came up because of a political, the, the political atmosphere and the racial atmosphere that came, that's why the Center for Black Excellence was in play. This, this, this athletic deficit has been in play for years and nothing has been done. All I'm saying is, it, it, how, how, how hard could it be to add in a couple, three, four, five, ten million dollars on a one, on, on any bond to do something that we know that directly affect our kids? That's all.
I, I want to just interject here and say, this is, this conversation, um, you're right, it's an iterative, it's iterative process. The, the winds shift all the time.
But the wish should shift, the wish should not shift when it comes to our kids.
Well, they shouldn't.
It should be a political issue when we're talking about our kids.
So I just want to mention here, and I'll try to help you, Chair DePass, with an elegant segue to visual and performing arts. But there's some interesting ideas bubbling up about including, um, some athletics in the conversations about the Center for Black Student Excellence. What does that mean? That's about investing in, you know, our, some of our historically schools that, that could include investing in athletic resources. Um, so, you know, there, there's people that are talking about that and I think it's kind of an interesting idea.
Absolutely, and I want to just come back and reiterate, athletics is, is a huge priority for me. I, I, I think everything we spent in the one point one billion dollars is for our kids. And so I, 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 I don't actually like that sort of, sort of either or, like, oh, we either spend it on athletics or it's not for our kids. What we're spending the one point one billion dollars on is for our kids and it's a high priority. I'm really glad you're on the board and as we talk about the two thousand twenty-four bond, um, it, it's very clear that that's going to be a high priority for you and it's probably going to be a high priority for me. I, 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 I feel very confident that we can agree come two thousand twenty-four that athletics is going to be in there. Now, is it going to be five or ten million dollars or is it going to be a hundred or two hundred million dollars? I think that's a, a really important question that's going to make a big difference. I'm not comfortable making that decision tonight. I think we make that decision a year from now or two years from now.
All right, well, I'm done with the conversation.
Excellent. Um, are we ready to move forward then? Uh, thank you, visual and performing arts program.
Thank you, Chair DePass, so I'd like to invite Programs Administrator, Program Administrator for the Arts, Kristin Brason, to talk about the arts. Kristin, are you out there?
Yes, I am, can you hear me, folks?
Yeah, great.
Great, great.
You can, thank you.
Great. So thanks, everyone, good evening, Chair DePass, Board Director, Student Representative Weinberg and Superintendent Guerrero. My name is Kristin Brason and I am the Program Administrator for Visual and Performing Arts. Thank you for providing an opportunity for me to speak on behalf of P P S Arts Education as we look to the future of our facilities. With Superintendent Guerrero and his leadership team prioritizing the arts and a strategic plan for arts education, we've been able to leverage the Student Investment Act dollars to embed music and visual arts teachers in the Jefferson, Roosevelt and Madison clusters and Title I schools in Southeast Portland. Additionally, we've had the opportunity to use these dollars to begin to provide a baseline of materials, equipment and supplies to support the startup costs of each of these programs. It's a monumental turn toward creating the conditions for arts education to thrive in support of the goals of the P P S vision and graduate portrait. The arts, much like the other programs you've heard from tonight, require specialized spaces that move beyond the needs of the traditional generalist classroom, classroom. The consequences of Measure Five passing in nineteen ninety led to two decades of major disinvestment in arts education in Oregon and in P P S. By two thousand twelve, the year prior to the implementation of the arts tax, there were austere arts offerings across our fifty-eight K five and K eight schools with a total of only nineteen F T E for approximately forty thousand K five students. Today, however, marks a new chapter. Uh, the arts taxes guaranteed baseline funding for F T E to support at least one art form offered at every elementary school in our district with no sunset to the fund. This is an incredible foundational investment for our district. However, those dark years for arts in P P S schools meant pre-existing dedicated and extremely specialized art spaces were often absorbed, dismantled and or repurposed. As we've added back programming, it's been very challenging to identify and reestablish spaces that are unique to the learning needs of students in our arts courses. While the arts tax measure provided funding for F T E, it was not accompanied by an investment in spaces or necessary curriculum, instructional materials, equipment, supplies. Schools are definitely doing the best to accommodate and at times that is meant using portables and high-traffic double-booked spaces like cafeteriums and gyms. The new long-range facility plan proposes a course correction so that all our students have access to the high-quality learning environments needed for authentic learning and sequenced curricular skill building in the arts such as visual arts studios, music rooms, dance studios and black box theaters. These improvements will not only reclaim arts education's space in our elementary school, they will contribute to deepening school sites as community hubs where student learning is visible and celebrated. The new directions and investment will allow students to see themselves as real-world practitioners of the arts. This underscores, underscores the goals of the graduate portrait by generating an environment where students have space to fully develop as powerful, effective communicators and intrinsically support students developing a positive, connected sense of self. The National Core Arts standards are framed with four processes, create, present slash perform, respond and connect. Adequate specialized space, spaces allow students to more readily achieve rigorous standards and project-based learning. Students who have the space to compose, rehearse, perform, exhibit and reflect on their work experience joyful learning that places high value on who they are as individuals. Our work here centrally on the long-range facility plans is to ensure these authentic classrooms and community spaces are built to encourage fellowship, to galvanize our vision for students and to create the conditions for one of the most essential social emotional needs, a student's sense of belonging as an active participant in the learning environment. This translates to students, parents, staff and the community entering through the school doors each day, witnessing beautiful student-created works of art, hearing incredible music-making, observing the joy of students expressing rhythm with their bodies and watching the spontaneous peer-to-peer interactions involved in live theater. Before I close, like Marshall and athletics, the Central Visual and Performing Arts Team and I would like to express deep gratitude to the Office of School Modernization. For the past several years, Dan Young, John Lyons and the entire team have committed to collaboration and coherency across the system. They've worked diligently to decipher the needs for student learning in all content areas, not just the arts, through deep consultation with our content areas, experts. Their service model will ensure that this long-range facility plan responds to the needs of students and is aligned with our greater strategic vision for P P S. Thank you again for allowing me to share.
Thank you, Kristin. Does anyone have any questions about, uh, what we heard?
I just, this is Director Lowry, and again, for those who weren't here before the meeting started, I am sick, uh, tonight. So I have my camera off, so you don't have to see me looking sad and pathetic, but, um, the real point of my comments is that I just am, again, once again, so grateful, um, Kristin Brason for your work and, um, the way that arts, we're repairing some of the way that we have neglected arts funding in the district. Um, I know that it makes a real difference for students to be involved in, um, these kinds of classes and these kinds of opportunities. Um, and I'm really excited about, uh, the future as we look at what, um, art spaces we can have. And as we talked about STEAM education with Aurora, I know that A stands for art and as we look at, you know, the, the places where design, you know, science meets art in those kinds of spaces, it's really exciting the ways that we're, um, collaborating across sort of some of these, um, departments that have been maybe more, um, siloed in the past. So I really appreciate this, this new vision.
Thank you.
I'm also a huge supporter of the visual and performing arts, um, having attended Jefferson uh, in the late seventies and, um, as Director Hollins mentioned, you know, it's, um, it's important to be connected to something. And the most exciting part of this, um, kind of long-range plan for visual and performing arts is the connectivity that we'll see between, in clusters and the ability for students to start, you know, with an instrument, or, or an art form or a practice and kind of grow that through their, uh, educational, uh, career. So, um, really excited to hear and, and learn more as we, as we go along.
And thanks, Chair DePass. As we celebrated the, uh, sports victory of our teams, I also want to celebrate. As we celebrated the uh, sports victory of our teams, I also want to celebrate that um, our Cleveland High School students are um, doing Antigone this week. So that live theater experience is also happening now, and we look forward to the the future of live theater in our district as well.
Yeah, directors, you're going to get something from Visual and Performing Arts soon that actually marks some calendar dates. We're sorry, starting to see those things now pop up where we're bringing performance back, community back together. It's just really incredible and timely.
It's great to hear.
Chair, if I may, um, I, just to share maybe what's an obvious observation here, uh, because it's it's actually a wonderful place to be when you're seeing um, the convergence of a lot of thoughtful emerging plans. Um, we're talking about a long-range facilities plan, but i- it it's only useful if it's supporting, to the points directors have been making tonight, the kinds of experiences we want them to have. And we have as a bedrock the vision that you all and community worked on. Uh, we have a multi-year strategic plan that talks about the action steps we'll take to it. But beyond that, we have college career readiness, high school success plans, we have a CTE um, plan. We we had to bring more advanced and varied courses to our middle-grade students, uh, and a master arts education plan. The fact that we have those as key references to inform the best way to use our facilities' assets or continue to enhance or build them out to support those kinds of activities. Imagine trying to travel and not having that kind of a roadmap, that kind of a reference point, or just building things to build things. Um, this way, we can we can act in in smart ways. So even though the plan is conceptual, it's a it's attempting to incorporate, which is why you see so many of our teaching and learning leaders here tonight to sort of just remind us, you know, this is, this is all part of a grander scheme. Uh, and it's a good place for a school system to be so that with plenty of time and anticipation, you know, we can be good public stewards and make the investments that are about enhancing the experiences and outcomes for our kids. So so just thank you for the thoughtful conversation and for our leaders for tying in the work that's been happening offline in some cases.
Yeah, and that's, I'm getting the sense of, if I can use the word choreography, in that this work has probably happened in different buckets, and it's kind of coming together in this document. So um, thank you so much. Um, is there, is there any more discussion about Visual and Performing Arts?
I I would like to just put a little finer point on what the superintendent said because I detected a little modesty there. But not only would it be difficult to be in that situation without those roadmaps, we were in that situation in every one of these categories.
And we're not today. So um, that that speaks to everyone on this call.
You muted yourself halfway through your statement.
That's too bad because it was, I was really on a roll.
Thank you, everyone. This is a really, really terrific conversation. Kristin, thank you so much. I really appreciate it. So if there are no other questions, I'm going to forge ahead to our final section here. Uh, and I'm just going to do a really quick summary of our capital forecast, which as we've heard tonight, just a little bit of our vast. To do that, I'm going to rely on our 2020 bond as a framework to organize and and to summarize some of the remaining capital investments for future bonds. So looking at physical facility improvements, um, so the FCA, the Facility Condition Assessment, documented um, over 620 million dollars in hard costs alone in deficiencies. And I want to be clear, that's fixing broken stuff. So that's leaking roofs, that's HVAC systems from the 1920s. Um, that that's um, crumbling exteriors and and drafty windows. Seismic was not included in that study, and and previous seismic estimates have been um, many orders of magnitude larger than that. So in the billions with a B dollars. Our accessibility costs, um, we we put a significant down payment on on accessibility with the 2020 bond, but we still have a long way to go to the tune of 50 million dollars in hard costs. Um, one other thing I want to say regarding our physical facility improvements is that construction costs escalate about three or four percent per year. But when renovating an existing building with significant deferred maintenance, uh, those costs can escalate at 1.25 to 1.5 times greater, particularly with aging mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems. And that's because those systems, while we wait, are continuing to degrade. So I just, I want to be really mindful that these costs are just going to continue to grow. Looking at our educational improvements, our sites range from just a few acres to over 30 acres. Um, and and of course, can only physically support um, so many programs. So we heard a lot about this tonight. Um, we are are similar to many urban districts where our sites are located on small urban plots of land. And our buildings are very old and built around antecedent educational practices. So programs like SPED, Physical Education, the Visual and Performing Arts, and CTE are poorly supported by buildings constructed in the 20s. Then looking at our largest bond capacity, or excuse me, our largest bond bucket capacity modernization. So the 2020 bond contains funds for a brand-new Jefferson and design work for Cleveland and Wells Burnett. And we've strongly signaled the construction for Cleveland and Wells Burnett will be included in the next bond. So with that, I will open it up to general questions. I'm I'm curious about these two in particular, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have for me.
I have one question, and um, and with the with the questions you have here, um, if you go back to the net, the last slide, when you said, so on the next bond, you guys already identified Cleveland and and Wells. What other priorities do you guys see that need to be addressed in the next bond as priority-wise?
Besides athletics.
So I I said this the last time we talked, but one of the great things that I really loved about this process is that I didn't have to say no to anyone. Um, so I, the dollar amount represented in the long-range facility plan is billions of dollars. Um, who, as our new CFO likes to say, remember that this is a um, a pie, not a well. So the the prioritization conversation will happen, it needs to happen, I think, as as we get closer to the bond. Um, so what we have here, I think, is a foundation to have those conversations.
And Director Hollands, I believe the reason, uh, one of the main reasons it's uh, uh, Cleveland and Wells Burnett have both been identified as uh, in the next bond is that in the 2020 bond, there was design work already in place. So the assumption is, if we're designing and we're 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 doing the community engagement, and we're designing a conceptual plan, then, you know, uh, we would eventually move into the master and then the construction. So again, of course, that doesn't mean, you know, that the board may not go in a different direction when we start planning that bond. But the anticipation, at least uh, on paper, based on, you know, previous decisions, is that this would go into the next bond.
Makes sense. Thanks.
Yeah, great question. Thank you, Jonathan, for the clarification. Are there other questions?
Uh, yeah, curious about how the Facilities Condition Assessment um, features into this because that's going to have probably a list of a ranking of deferred maintenance. How does that um, work kind of feather in with uh, bond planning?
Yep, so.
And and I mean, when you you give that number, I think it was 650 million in hard costs that did not include seismic. So I'm just wondering, how do we, how do we prioritize buildings? Um, is it based on need or geography or?
Yeah, so we're actually looking at a building system approach. So we're breaking down our FCA, FCI data and and generating scores based on building system. And we'll develop targets um, for for targeted FCIs that we want to to address over time. So we'll we'll look at major systems based on what's necessary to keep buildings functional, warm, safe, and dry. Um, organized like that. Dan, you can jump in here. I know. Uh, I I'm missing some things here.
Yeah, no, it'd be, it's all a part of that prioritization process that when we go into a bond. And so I'm also fond of our CFO's comment of, it's it's a pie, not a well. And really, when you look at each of the individual components, like if you look at physical facility improvements, that that's also a pie. It's a pie of need, and it's broken out into a bunch of different uh, categories of work and systems of work. And so really, the the early stages of bond planning is taking these various pies and prioritizing what their biggest needs are and starting to compare them. And then comparing them against, you know, what is uh, what is the potential total amount of that future bond? And and it's, it is very iterative. Um, there's lots of discussion, and there's lots of different versions. And that's why we like to start our bond planning about 18 months out. We want to give ourselves a lot of time to have those discussions and to put some cost estimates to them as well, because as scopes of work and and different projects come in and out, uh, we want to be able to have time to estimate those. We have the best information that we have.
One quick question. After Cleveland and Wells Burnett, will all of our high schools be fully modernized then?
That's correct. Those are the last ones.
So. Getting really bad at meeting past 8:30, I see. Um, are there any other questions? It looks like um, Director Brent Edwards.
Yeah, I had just um, a sort of, this is more of an overarching um, question because I was looking at that last slide you had, like, is this, are we ready to accept it? Um, so I was going to try and answer your, the question you asked, do my homework. Um, is that, you know, based on some of the discussion tonight, I would want to just see how that um, you know, how's tonight's discussion um, gets infused or not? Um, and my assumption is, you know, just that the second part of the question um, is, you know, with those things that there seem to be agreement on, uh, maybe uh, would be either fleshed out or added, or um, you know, in some ways reflective of tonight's discussion, that I would say, yes, it's a great um, starting point for bond planning. Um, one of the things, I guess, that I seem to just be missing, I think, is sort of like that you have these planning principles, but they seem to be at the back of the document. And sort of anytime I I think of things, I sort of like, okay, front and center, you know, our mission and vision. And like, everything flows from that. Um, and then, you know, whether the planning principles, and again, let's sort of go back to like the, whether it's sustainability or accessibility, um, you know, arts and um, CTE, but moving that up so that it, that's the frame that we're looking at, you know, like, this is, aside from our annual budget, this is like our biggest asset we have, and how do we use that in service to our mission and vision? It's just a d- a little bit different way to think about it, because that's how I would hope the community would look at our assets. They're not just buildings or, you know, pieces of land, but they are tools for us to help deliver on our, on our mission.
Yeah, and kind of with that, some of our board goals, especially for eighth grade and for graduation, center around CTE or other career readiness. So having the spaces for students to actually pursue that would help boost um, or go towards improving our percentage of students achieving that goal.
So that's a great question in terms of next steps, is that um, with the planning principles, the, and this document references the vision and the strategic plan, um, which are important yeah, guiding, kind of guiding principles for this work and um, is is there, do we have a process for prioritizing or for aligning the these, this document, this long-range facility plan to those board goals, which will very likely change over time as well?
Yeah, so I guess first, uh, Director Brim Edwards, we, that's a great suggestion. We'll we'll move, we'll shift some things around, and we'll we'll foreground our planning principles. Um, I I think we've always um, thought of the document as we're we're setting the stage. So we've we've offered the planning principles, I think, um, with a lot of integrity, with dialogue with our community. I think the the test of the planning principles is going to be within specific bond dollar amounts. Um, it's, I think that's really where our our planning principles will be tested, refined, and will really have a chance to be um, uh, kind of um, socialized with our larger community.
In terms of next steps, um, could we receive some guidance on um, if this will be uh, if you'll incorporate some of the feedback that you heard tonight, um, some of the questions, and do we have another chance at looking at it? And um, I think Director Brim Edwards asked a great question today about whether we have to accept it or adopt it. Um, can someone on the call speak to what our next steps would be?
Yeah, I'll jump in here. So our our plan was, is to make final revisions, uh, then provide it to the the board for review, and then bring it forward at a board meeting for uh, acceptance, not approval. There there's no statutory requirement for this document to be approved by the board because it is, you know, the guiding document for future decisions and future board decisions. We want to make sure that all the directors have an opportunity to become very familiar with it and very comfortable with the document and the contents of it, and be able to to pull it off the shelf and open up to the the pages that they need to. Uh, but our hope is to finalize it here pretty soon, incorporate the information that we heard tonight, uh, provide that final document, and then bring it to you one more time.
So Dan, just to clarify for the for the public, because if you look through that, it, the actual document, not tonight's presentation necessarily, but in the actual document, there's some prioritizations, but by accepting it, it's, we're not saying, yes, we agree um, with you know, exactly how it's been laid out in terms of prioritization, but we're accepting the information as this is valuable information for us in our planning and and to to guide our, guide our thinking versus we've now agreed to accept all the highest priorities in each of the sections. Is that correct?
Correct. I think that's a, that's a a perfect categorization. Uh, and certainly, as John noted earlier, uh, it's informational, it's guidance. Uh, the board uh, can certainly make different decisions with new information uh, when the time comes.
Dan, we don't have the, I I don't have in front of me the the huge tome on the capital forecast, but one thing that I didn't see called out or disaggregated in here is um, our uh, leased spaces. Um, and when they come off lease and what their condition is, and any analysis of how we might use them. You know, for example, there's no, um, I mean, now we have Kenton back under our control, but there isn't anything speaking to what a long ra- range use might be there, same with um, Riverdale School or Smith School are, if it makes sense to rehabilitate it. So um, am I missing that somewhere, John or Dan?
You, so so we have information on our vacant and and swing sites. Uh, for the lease sites, we have condition data. Uh, but we did not infuse that with any capital information out of respect for our tenants. So the the only lease sites that we have are Edwards and, oh gosh, I'm missing the other one.
Riverdale.
Riverdale. Oh, thank you. That means there's three. Just one of the one, yeah. But um, the the section you're missing, Director Konstant, the the capital forecast, the larger section, we'll have capital forecast for Kenton for, um, we'll speak about Turwilliger, we'll speak about Smith. Um, we'll have some analysis on all of those sites, yes.
Okay, because we can't, we can't forget about them, even if we're not actively using them.
Very important sites. Absolutely, yep.
Speaking, speaking of Riverdale, I I thought we um, had made the decision when, whenever the lease term was up, that we would, and there's a sig- pretty significant capital outlay to get it back. Um, but that, that was a direction we're ha- having. Does that need to be in- included in this, or is that just in one of the other documents that Stan referred to them?
We, I I don't know if this document is the the right place for for that granular detail about the the decisions around the lease. We do have a document that uh, tracks all of our leases. I think we send it out quarterly. Uh, we can certainly provide that again. Uh, to your specific question about the decision around, have we, have we made a formal decision about what to do? a formal decision about what to do when Riverdale's lease ends? I don't know that offhand. Let me talk to our real estate department.
I don't think we decided, but it's a pretty, it's a capital expenditure we'd certainly have to plan for, because it's not as, I forget, it seems like it was 10 million or something that we'd have to come up with in order to get the property back.
We have to reimburse the valuation of the improvements that the tenant made.
Do we have any other questions or any other business tonight? I hear none. So we'll adjourn this meeting. Our next meeting for the Board of Education regular meeting is scheduled for November 16th at 6:00 PM. Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.